up the Port Wine Amy City Council regular meeting to order here for November the nineteenth. And we're starting with the six P M. Closed session. Could we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Fig?
Here.
Oh, it's not Fig.
Jim, try grabbing it, hold it.
Councilmember Hensley.
Put your hand, no, no, no.
No, no, you just keep it.
Put your hand on it, and I think it will stop.
Speakers are up there, so you want to block the sound this way.
Here.
Councilmember Sherkey?
President.
Mayor Protember?
Here.
Meerschaap. Here. And we start then with public comments, and we'll assign about ten minutes for that. Becky, did you have a public comment for this time, closed session?
No.
Okay, all right. So seeing no one else in the audience, we will move on to item number three, Conference with Real Property Negotiators. And we will then go to our deputy city manager, I mean, city attorney, sorry about that.
Okay, so there's a Conference with Real Property Negotiators. The property is seven hundred east Port Winnie me Road. Agency-designated representatives are Rod Butler as the city manager, and Tony Stewart, community development director, Steve Kinney, consultant, Charis navigating. The negotiating parties are Red Mule Group.
And then we have a second, C S four, go ahead.
Uh, C S four is Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-four-nine-fifty-seven-point-six. The agency-designated representatives are Linda Catherine Lee, deputy city manager, the finance director Ken McDonald, and Stephen M. Berliner, special counsel for the city.
Okay, so we will recess into closed session, and we will reconvene out here for the six-thirty regular city council meeting.
And then we have a second, C S four, go ahead.
Uh, C S four is Conference with Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section fifty-four-nine-fifty-seven-point-six. You can get it.
And they have like a little dinner, a little lunch, and then we have, um, and entertainment, stuff like that, and even we have free raffle prizes, it's, it's nice.
I'm not going to be able to do that.
He calls my name, I'm saying, you know, but he gets on the phone, and I'm just, I'm like, I don't need to go home, you know, and you have to do, you know, whatever, my golf, I don't know. I just, I don't know, I don't know. I did whatever, I could do it, you could do it better, right? And I just, well, it's just part of my picture, that's why I'm doing this. I'm like, uh, I'm like, you know, I'm second intention, you know, for certain, like, I'm used to doing things, I'm like, seeing the holiday lunch, we are, it's probably on the activity, it's a partner, you know, you, that's what I'm just saying, about doing that, that's what I'm saying. And it's very, so I, and it's very creative, and Tony, I was, you know, set, like, poke around in place, pretty much, you know, you're in a holiday lunch, you, you know, what, yeah. You know, they have, we should go there, and they, um, and they have like a little dinner, a little lunch, and then we have, um, and entertainment, stuff like that, and even we have free raffle prizes, it's, it's nice.
I'm not going to be able to do that.
And I know that stands for.
Uh, disabled.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, my, my, uh, best friend, he's a hundred percent disabled now because he, uh, he was an A, uh,
Right.
And he got, he aged orange or something, so he had diabetes, and that's why it's a lot of it. Yeah, yeah. So he's had all of that, yes. I mean, like, you know, he's sixty years old, he's a big, but, you know, I mean, you know, he's got a lot of, a lot of issues, and so. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I know. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, I mean, I mean, I, I guess, I mean, to a degree, many cases, like, I think I lucked out because, you know, I, when I graduated high school, I had like a really high lottery record, so there's, you know, quite often.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean, not that, not that it disturbed us, I did, but it's kind of like, you know, it wasn't, you know, I got hit by the hell, you know, you had different friends of mine, you know, you know, brothers came out of it, and like, you know, the, the things that they had to, you're just psycholizing, you know, the bad stuff, or not, like, you know, even years from now, or if that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would ask, like, sure, there's, no, there's, oh, yeah. No, I mean, I've never, obviously, I haven't had experience, but just knowing that, I mean, I, you know, like, it, that's, sometimes it's hard, you know, maybe, maybe, anyway, just wanted to say that, uh, I recognize that you, uh, you're very, if you want, I'm looking at what I can, I can, that, you know. Yeah. Anyway, good night. Well, so we, we wanted to, like, try to, we, we, you know, that one day, try to organize this house, you know, get to a, still, everything off, still, and, uh, there are a lot of, uh, definitely, uh, we, we said, just four thirty, that's, uh, you know, back to this, so, I, um, I like the house, you know, whatever you do exactly, and I still like it, we like to be here, right, you know, then you can be there for a long time, just, uh, some, uh, we, you know, we, um, but, uh, no, 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 I'm sure, well, yeah, and, and more of, yeah, okay, I saw that, so, you know, I'm sure, sorry, you can do it, you can, you can, I don't see, you know, people, you know, these, uh, also, you know, that, you know, and this, uh, all, so, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm, I mean, you know, you're, 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 Big Bill's, well, that's, uh, he is, but the ones that, uh, who are, that's, that's the lead, uh, also, yeah. He, but, uh, of course, there is some, you know, that's, uh, I, that's, also, right after we, uh, you know, use, uh, I think, then, question, I mean, it's, like, I think it's like, it's like, they watch, like, the government, but I bought my house, like, right?
I have my house.
It's real, like, it's, well, it's, well, it's, now, some reason, like, they, they, they're really hard, really, it's not, I mean, it's not necessarily, it's, you know, things, like, even, like, the concept, I read, you know, the whole part, and it makes, you know, but, but, the reason why, I just call, the best part of it, for, sometimes, maybe, sometimes, yeah, but certainly, that's, it's, it's, like, hour over, like, I have, if, well, while they're power jumping, I, I think they're, um, you know, there's, something that, so I, we have, we have, a lot of states, uh, and, 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 I, 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 they all, you know, it's very slow, everybody's parking down, really, it's, really, and there's no, uh, there's no, you know, there's just, you know, it's not, you have to, you know, yeah, you find out, and, uh, I was like, I don't know, figure out, I mean, I was, that, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm,
Colonel Boyd, who we saw on the last slide. There were, I believe, about forty families that were represented at that ceremony in Washington. And there are other members that could potentially receive it if they can prove their, you know, history with the Civil Air Patrol during the World War II timeframe. Civil Air Patrol was actually involved early on with World War II. They were doing coastal patrols. While everybody was focused on the Pacific and Pearl Harbor, there were German subs off of the east coast. While the Civil Air Patrol was out doing patrols where the Air Force didn't have the bandwidth to be doing it, they were off doing other things, obviously. We could fly out of twenty-one different ports along the east coast, watching the security, early on Homeland Security efforts by the Civil Air Patrol. We have saved, this one was a fascinating one to me because I had no idea we had this sort of thing. Three hundred lives saved through our forensics cellular services. We just recently worked with, I think it was the Riverside Sheriff's Department. Somebody had gone missing. Not everybody has a fancy watch or, you know, a beacon, but most everybody has a cellphone. And we have a group of people that can actually tell you where that cellphone is and help triangulate in on it. And we were able to save a life using that skill. And it was the Sheriff's Department that called us in. I think that's a pretty cool thing. We've saved, like I say, three hundred lives since 2006. And we continue to do that. And that's one of the things that nobody knows about. Part of my job, my personal mission, is to make sure people know what we're doing. We have six thousand nine hundred crew members ready to fly in emergency services. So we do several things from that perspective. One is, we fly missions where we do search and rescue. In fact, on Monday of last week, I was on a search and rescue flight. A beacon went off. It was in the Burbank area. Fortunately, it turned out to be a false alarm, but you have to treat the false alarms just like you do the real thing. And there's a beacon that goes off. You take off as part of an air crew. I'm a mission scanner. I'm not a pilot. And you'll see where that's important in a little bit. Not everybody has to be a pilot to be in the Civil Air Patrol. We also have thirty-three thousand emergency responders trained to FEMA standards. That was something that was a surprise to me. I've taken quite a bit of FEMA training. We take the same FEMA training that the other emergency services organizations do, fire department, police department, EMTs, other organizations in the federal and state governments that take FEMA training. We have to train to the same standards. That all ties back to Katrina, when everybody has it a different language. And it was decided by some FEMA work that everybody needed to have a common language. A lot of the breakage had to do with the fact that one department didn't speak the same language as another department, and a lot of confusion during Katrina. The whole FEMA training strategy now is based on how do we solve that in a common language. November first, we just recently had a search mission. You may have seen in the news, a hiker that went missing up north in Yosemite. And the hiker was an experienced hiker, had gotten lost, decided he didn't need to tell anybody where he was going, just generally hiking in the Sierras, and got lost. We were called in not to do the ground search, and we were not specifically doing an air search, but what we did is something called a highbird. We fly an airplane way over the mountain ranges up there because the radios couldn't work between all of the different ground search units. We were basically an airborne repeater. So we flew from morning to dusk. Can't fly at night. They weren't doing the search at night. And we basically repeated and coordinated the radio communications between all of the ground teams. Unfortunately, it turns out, the hiker didn't survive. He apparently had fallen off of a cliff and didn't survive. But this was one of the kinds of things that we can do. One of the other things we can do, and I haven't been involved in it yet, and I think it could be kind of interesting, although intimidating, is we play practice targets for the U.S. Air Force. We'll take our little tiny Cessna, and we'll go flying, and we'll go into a restricted area. And next thing you know is you've got two jets flying on either side of you, as slow as they can. And they command you to, you know, leave the area. With today's environment, you never know what that little plane might be doing. And so we let the Air Force practice with us. I don't think we've lost any airplanes during those training missions. But that was something here just fairly recent for us. The other thing that I wanted to point out, and I mentioned, I'm not a pilot. A lot of people think Civil Air Patrol is all about pilots, and they're very important. Somebody's got to fly the planes. We have over five hundred Cessnas in the fleet in the U.S. The Camarillo Squadron has a plane that's assigned to it, and that's where we flew out of for the Monday mission. But these are all, well, I guess maybe not all of, but a good chunk of what else the Civil Air Patrol needs. You need scanners. That's what I do. I sit in the back of the plane, and I look for whatever's, you know, the target is. If it's a downed plane, if it's a hiker, if it's whatever we're looking for. If you're going up to look at a dam that may be getting ready to break, you know, we can, we go up and do that. We take photographs. In fact, we've been asked by FEMA to photograph the fires up in Northern California. And here shortly, that project will shift down to Southern California, and we'll be providing FEMA with photos of all of the disaster areas and where the fires are so they can make assessments. We can do that probably better than anybody because we've got these planes that can fly low and slow, and we can fly a lot, lot cheaper than most of the other services up there who have to do different kinds of emergency tasks. We have cadet programs, recruiting chaplain. We have public affairs, finance, aerospace education, radio communications. So I've actually got four jobs with the Civil Air Patrol. One is a mission scanner. I'm the Assistant Communications Officer and the Assistant Personal Development, which is basically training and education. And I'm the Public Affairs Officer. All of that in five months, and I haven't read all the requirements yet. In fact, in the public affairs area, I've asked them not to tell me the rules because that would probably slow me down. So we've been around for seventy-five years. We just celebrated our birthday, and we continue to serve the community with the same enthusiasm and expertise that we've done for seventy-five years from when it was founded in nineteen forty-one. And I'm proud to be part of an organization that has saved one hundred and fifty-seven lives, and that number changes frequently. It constantly goes up. And I think that's an exciting thing to be part of. And I tell everybody in all of these job assignments, even if they're not a pilot, that they're part of that life saved, and they can take pride in being part of that. So the other thing is, and this sort of reaches out to the overall community, is how do you help us? How do you become part of it? Well, you can join and volunteer as a senior member, an adult member. I had somebody the other day said senior doesn't mean old. But you can be a senior member. You can join as a cadet. A lot of times what happens is a cadet will want to join, and the parents will join as well, so they can participate in the activities with the kids. The cadet program runs from age twelve, is the earliest they can join. And the latest that's practical for them to join is eighteen, but they can stay in it until they're twenty. Once they hit twenty-one, they would have to transfer into the seniors and still continue to participate. The other thing is, and this is really, this is really cool, hopefully that wasn't for me. This is really cool. And this is something else I just found out about. We have an education program for teachers that teach any of the STEM types of programs. We've invested a lot of time, energy, and money in developing material and projects for STEM teachers. And for something like thirty-five dollars a year, a teacher can get into the program. They get an orientation flight, and they have access to all of the materials for free. They can teach that in their schools or libraries. And just think about what an important area STEM is today, and being able to get access by something that we've made available to them. I think that's something that everybody needs to hear about. And then becoming a financial sponsor for us. We have these things called patrons. They basically sign up like they have an ID, but they don't participate in any of the activities. They don't do anything other than they have an ID, they get communicated to, and they provide a certain level of funding for us. We are a charitable organization. We do get money from the Air Force. We don't get nearly enough. That helps take care of the planes, and they reimburse us for fuel for flights that are directed by the Air Force. But not all flights are directed by the Air Force. One of the things that I suggested to the supervisor when I was down in her office was setting up MOUs, Member Analysts of Understanding. There isn't anything that says we couldn't have an agreement between Port Wayne Eme and the Civil Air Patrol here locally, that if you wanted to have photos taken of a local disaster area for your local community, we certainly could do those kinds of missions. We're underutilized, and that's one of my goals, is to get the cadets more heavily utilized and to get the plane in the air more often, doing more things to help the community. So that's one of the things I'd like to be able to talk about ongoing as well, is how do we do that? Oh, and not to forget President Kennedy, don't ask what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. So as an individual, as an organization... There we go. All right. So here's some of the things that we can do from a, how do you support us, perspective. And this is just sort of my off-the-top-of-the-head list. We have cadet programs. We have quite a few of those. I'd love to talk to you about them in more detail. Cadet scholarships. We just had five cadets that had to drop out of the program because unfortunately, their parents couldn't afford to participate in the program. And so my goal is to help raise awareness of that and help, and that's one of my conversations I had with the Rotary Club, is these kids need help. If they're going to become future leaders, if they're going to become like that list of people I showed you on the screen, and it's, there's no place else that I think that can do that for them, then we need to have some additional funds to do that. The members donate as much as they can. In fact, a lot of us buy our own equipment. I'm on the hunt for a radio. We have our special radios that we use. The signals that we use, our frequencies we use are assigned by the Air Force. It's not part of the FCC, although I do have a ham license. The other things are monthly contributions, one-time contributions, project-based funding, and that's an area that I'm going to be hitting up Home Depot on. We need a new floor. It's a fifty-year-old floor in a fifty-year-old Air Force building that we got to inherit. And so we need to get that fixed, and I understand they have programs. So if you know anybody at Home Depot that could help me make that happen, I'd be more than happy to have that conversation. Facilities and equipment, you know, we always need to have facilities and equipment help. And then finally, the thing that I think helps me the most from what I'm trying to do, because I'm just one person doing this, and I'm surrounded by a bunch of pilots and people doing stuff, you know, with the rest of their lives, so I'm not doing the campaigning. What would help me is just being able to spread the word. Have people come to our Facebook page, find out what we're doing, see if they're interested in joining. The more people I can touch, the more viral it can become. I actually look at this as my form of social media. I think social media is great. We've got all of one hundred and twenty-five people on our Facebook page. And we think it's great because we have a Facebook page, and we publish stuff out there, but only one hundred and twenty-five people sometimes see it. So I need to help beat some drums and drive some people in our direction from that communication perspective. So again, any help I can get in getting the word out. Everybody back here, same deal for you guys. That would really be appreciated. Just real quick on the photos, I know you guys are probably wondering when he's going to shut up. So the two young ladies at the bottom photo on there, they had just gotten their certificates from their first flights. We have these orientation flights. They're pretty pleased about the fact they just went up in an airplane for the very first time and got their certificates. That's one of the things we do. The middle picture, those young ladies are working on an aerospace project with rockets right there. I wish somebody had told me about this a long time ago. I would have loved to have been involved in that. I have no idea. I think it's world domination, the guys at the top photo are plotting. But this all shows you that cadets are actively involved in doing these kinds of activities. So I guess that's really pretty much it. I would like to also say, here's where we are. That's my email address. That's our website, although it's fairly ugly, and that's one of the things I've got to work on in my spare time. But that's when we meet. Would love to have you come down and meet us and sit in one of the sessions, maybe even address the squad or the cadets, and just talk to them about, you know, what you do and how their services could possibly help. So I would like you to thank MOUs. And then also, from a cadet perspective, maybe not necessarily funding, although I'll take any money you want to throw at me. But I think they have a program that could be beneficial. They have an honor guard that they train for. I would love to be able to get them to get out and do more of that. So if you have something where an honor guard, a cadet honor guard, would be a benefit to what you're doing, love to have a conversation about getting them out and doing that. The more they practice, the better they are, but if you don't get to go out and do it every now and then, it's kind of what's the point? So that's my pitch. I'm sticking to it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, Councilmember Hansley.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I appreciate it. I kind of forgot you guys even existed. I thought maybe you'd flown off. Right behind you is a Miss Deborah Eric. She's a board member with the Channel Islands Navy League. Also, she serves in the Vietnam Veterans of Ventura County and is in their honor guard, their color guard. You might give her contact information so that she can contact you. Probably the Navy League might be interested in embracing some of your programs, particularly the cadet programs. Because we encourage the Sea Cadets, we encourage the Police Cadets, and a lot of other programs. So make sure that you get in contact with her, and maybe we can work out something for you.
I appreciate that, and I will. And just so you know, the pilot that checked me off on being a mission scanner is a Top Gun pilot, flew with the U.S. Navy.
Whoa.
So...
Are you reaching out to the Navy itself, too?
They're on my list. Ventura is a big place.
Okay. And I have some contacts with the Navy also.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
See her, and we'll see what we can do for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Sharkey.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Flynn, good to see you here. This is, yeah, my uncle was an Air Transport Command pilot in World War II, and he was involved with CAP back when I was just a wee lad, so I've always been aware. I mean, last time I heard anything about CAP was a few years ago, when I was still an active pilot over at the Ninety-Nines, there was a presentation. I said, oh, this is a good group. Maybe I should do something with it now.
We need pilots.
I won't tell you how far out of currency I am.
Oh.
But, you know, I look at, you know, AOPA, they have discussions about the aging pilot population. It's like more and more of the members are old guys like me that don't fly anymore. So I think it's just a great thing you're out here promoting this and getting kids into the cadet program. I mean, we need young aviators. And, you know, as I'm signing off on these duties here, you know, I may contact you. I've been thinking about it for a long time, and this may be the impetus I need to do that. You know, it's, you know, you've made a good presentation, and contact stuff is great, and I'm glad to see you're out here doing this. I think this is, people don't realize what you all do. And, you know, it's like Mr. Hansley said, well, we forget you're even there.
Yep.
And, you know, I think we need to do more to promote the organization, let people know why they're in. And even, you know, as you said, I mean, there may be ways we can take advantage of your mission. So, you know, great to see you, and, you know, like I said, I'm really happy that you're doing all this.
Well, thank you. We have two programs about exactly what you're talking about, youth aviation and the need for pilots. I'll forward some information on to you guys, and then you can share it with everybody. But I think you'll be interested in both of them. Both of them are geared exactly at what you're talking about, is that gap that's forming around pilots.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Protemberg.
Congratulations. Great presentation. We're glad that you're here and representing within the county. How many airplanes are in this particular, and is it a wing? What do you guys call yourselves?
Well, there's a California wing, and so that's all of California.
Ventura County.
Right. And in Ventura, we've got, well, there's the SEMI Squadron, there is the Camarillo Squadron. We have, I think that's really it in Ventura, but we go up to Santa Barbara. We've got somebody up in Santa Barbara, and we've got somebody in Bakersfield.
How many planes are in Camarillo?
Camarillo, we've got one plane.
And one in SEMI?
SEMI doesn't have one. If they had to fly a mission, they'd have to come down and use our plane.
Okay.
So they're strategically placed, but we have a total of five hundred planes in the overall fleet. They belong to the Civil Air Patrol. The one in Camarillo does belong to us, so it's available for any squadron.
So the Civil Air Patrol will buy the planes, and then they'll get located at, with squadrons.
Right.
How big is the squadron in Camarillo?
We have forty-seven senior members and thirty-five cadets.
That's great. That's just great. Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like a really wonderful program, so thank you, Timothy, for coming out and telling us more about it. You know, I have to stop and think that we have a Veterans Day celebration every year, and so certainly Larry Downing may be able to work with you for the honor guard.
Yeah, I thought about that, for the honor guard, yeah.
And then we also have, I believe, a youth expo, correct, coming up? And so that might be an opportunity to recruit some cadets for you.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah, youth involvement for, I think they're looking at May, May of 2019?
May 4th.
Yeah, great. May 4th, 2019. So it's a little ways off, but Larry Downing is also involved in that, so you could, that's right. Becky Becker.
So you could see Becky as well.
And Larry also books the speaker series at the museum, which is, but he's booked way months ahead, but, you know, you could probably do an interesting presentation. We have a Saturday speaker series at the town, the city museum over there.
Outstanding. You know, anyplace, anytime, somebody wants to hear the pitch, I've got a longer version than this, and I've got the shorter version.
Well, it sounds like there's several places where we can plug you in.
That'd be perfect. I really do appreciate that.
Thank you for your time spending it with us. Thanks. Okay. So we go on to item six B, presentation, the city's website redesign and upgrade project. And that's Miss Linda Lee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, City Manager, butlers, and staff. For the record, my name is Linda Catherine Lee, Deputy City Manager. I am pleased to report back to the City Council of the project status and highlight key features of the new website. By wave of background information, the city website was last updated in 2011. Since that time, the city website partner with Civic Plus updated the technological functions, including the interface of smartphones and mobile devices. So we take advantage of that applications in the last couple of months. In March of 2018, your council approved the upgrade. Since that time, up until now, I'm pleased to report that the city has extended over one hundred and fifty hours in addition to maintaining the daily job responsibilities to complete the upgrade. The redesigned website will be launched on Monday, November the 26th, at 9:00 a.m. Pacific Standard Time. A news bulletin notice will be posted on the current website and Facebook informing residents and visitors of the launch date. At this time, I would like to take a moment to demonstrate some key features. Let's take a look at the current website. Let's go ahead and move to the new redesigned website.
There it is.
Some of the new features include user interface and color scheme, multilingual capability So on Monday, when the website go live, the user can key this into the smart devices, smartphones, iPads, and be able to use these applications. In addition to this capability, we've also taken advantage to ADA compliance in terms of font accessibility, typeface used to display the text, numbers, and characters as required by ADA. You can see the modern design and functionality. It is truly a reflection of who we are as the City Port Wayne Eme. The visual display of featured content on the homepage, such as news, city calendar, city spotlight. The city spotlight carousel will also features events and special happenings. The improved website also have navigations with what we call mega menus. So user can go through multiple menus and be able to find who we are, how we do business, how do I do a certain task. The comment actions pinned to all webpages for easy access, such as online bill pay, report a concern, agenda minutes, and employment. This is a very brief highlight featuring the new accessibilities of our website. Upon the launch date, I will be sending to all of you the link, so you can also be able to test this on your mobile devices. And it's also encouraged for all users to come and visit the City Port Wayne Eme. This is many, many stages. The website can only be active as we, as staff, committed to it. So what we've designed in terms of the implementation is to have superusers assigned to each program department. Then the superusers will be updating, maintaining the website. I plan to have quarterly meetings with the superusers to be able to test, to ensure that we are actually using this portal to the best of our ability to inform and communicate the residents and visitors. So at this time, I wish to publicly recognize the talent and project management of the entire project team. Aaron Rida Meyer, our IT manager, Ashley Pavon, our IT assistant, the entire departmental users and their department directors for their tremendous support, and above all, the Civic Plus business partners for their relentless support and effective project management. This concludes my presentations, and I'm available for questions.
It really looks super. Thank you for the work, team. Great job. Any comments, Mayor Protemberg?
It looks beautiful. And having been involved before in building corporate websites, I imagine this was a heck of a job. How long did it take you to, how long was the job? How long did you work on this?
Since March 2019 through today, one hundred and fifty hours in total.
And a lot of people involved, too.
Yes.
Yeah. It looks really dynamic, and thanks for making it easier for those that are mobile first, you know, that that's where they get their information and that's where they go to. So, super job. Anyone else wanting to mention anything? Councilmember Hansley.
It's about time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you for your leadership on this. Will you be posting this on the city's Facebook page and through other avenues here, next door?
The message has been launched, and I've asked staff to post it, so it'll be ready to go Monday. But we want to use this week as a teaser to all of our residents and users, so we're doing a full campaign to ensure people come in and visit our new website.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are at agenda item number seven, open forum, and we reserve up to thirty minutes at this point in the agenda to hear matters from the public that are not on the agenda itself. And so I do have one speaker card, and that is Becky Bruning for the Friends of the Bard. So come on up, Becky. So each speaker has three minutes.
Don't take the whole thirty minutes, Becky.
Oh, man.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, council staff. I'm here on behalf of Friends of the Bard Mansion tonight. I want to remind everybody that on December fourteenth, we are having our holiday dinner. We will have the Boys and Girls Club performing, as well as Rick Ash, and we will be doing some Christmas caroling and socializing. be doing some Christmas caroling and socializing. Deadline for this is December the 1st, and I do have flyers and dinner reservations on the back table for anyone who is interested. And since I use less than the minimum, I'm gonna switch hats here, and I'm gonna be with the Port Wymanee Historical Museum. I just want everyone to know that they will not have any activities until after the 1st of the year. There will be no port tours, lighthouse tours, guest speakers, anything like that. It will still be open for the public to go in and look at the exhibits. There just won't be any activities going on until after the 1st of the year.
Okay. All right.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Becky. Anyone else wishing to address the council on matters not on the agenda? Rich, come on up. You can fill out a speaker card then later. And you have three minutes.
You probably know, but the senior holiday luncheon will be on Tuesday, December the 11th. And so this is your opportunity to put on an apron and help serve the various different seniors. We're gonna be having a lot of great entertainment. We're going to be having a lot of different raffle prizes. Just recently, I was out there hitting the streets, getting raffle prizes from the local businesses and stuff. So put that down on your agenda. We'll have flyers out there.
All right. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Hensley.
Could you give us the date the tickets are going on sale?
The tickets actually are on sale now, and one of the things that we've done this year because it's so, or the last couple of years because it's so popular, is we have a week pre-registration where only Port Wymanee residents can get the tickets, and then it's opened up to the entire community. Another thing that we've done is we've limited it to one person can only get two tickets, because what had happened in the past is one person might get nine tickets with the good intentions of giving it to all of their friends and then maybe not being able to do that. And so we help, we pretty much are gonna fill it up with the 200 people. And so that's the answer to that.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Rich. Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll have some time at the end of the agenda if you care to address us at that time. We move on to item number eight, Consent Agenda and the Approval of Items 8A through 8C. There is a place here where we could take public comments on those items on the agenda, and seeing none then.
Who to approve?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none, so motion carries unanimously. And Mr. Deputy City Attorney, if there was anything that you need to read by title only at this time for the consent, you do so, but seeing none? Okay, all right. Thank you. So we move on to item number nine on the agenda, Public Works Director Reports and Comments. So that would be Mr. Villafana.
Madam Mayor, I will recuse myself on this one, as the FPPC says this is within the exclusion zone, even though it's the other side of the tracks.
I see.
I'm done arguing with those guys.
Okay, thank you. So we'll note then on the minutes that Councilmember Sharkey is recusing himself and is leaving the meeting, the meeting room here, and so Mr. Villafana.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Tonight, I'm gonna, I'm gonna present from up here because I've got a PowerPoint, and also it's a staff report. The staff report is requesting authorization for the Public Works Director to spend funds from the former redevelopment agency in the amount not to exceed $150,000 to fund the listed amenities from Miranda Park. And I had brought these to the council before, but I was directed to come back at a later date, and this is that later date. So we're gonna start with the PowerPoint presentation. Ready, Michelle? All right, the Miranda Park proposed amenities, we have.
Yeah, before you go further, I know that usually when John Sharkey recuses himself, I have to recuse myself, but I think I'm outside that 500, right? City Manager Rod Butler. I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, you're far enough to the west that you're out of the danger zone as far as a conflict.
Thank you.
All right, all right.
We can move forward.
What we're proposing is, we're proposing two security cameras that are gonna be pole mounted, and this slide shows the two proposed pole locations, and they'll be near the basketball courts and the parking lot. You see the view sheds here. You can see one pole mounted. You can see the basketball courts that were recently renovated, and also the parking lot. So we'll have good coverage of the park. Want to go to the next one, Michelle? Okay. We have a pan tilt zoom capability, and it's a 360 degree, so we'll have very good coverage. And then we have to put up a sign that says that you're, you know, where you have security cameras, et cetera, on there. That's a requirement. I have to check with the city attorney for the exact verbiage of that. All right? And the estimated cost for the cameras, and this is gonna be done with a combination of city staff and a specialty contractor. Our streets crew will install conduit, install the poles and the signage, and a specialty contractor will mount the cameras and install the networking facilities necessary to operate the system. The estimated cost for this is 35 to $40,000, and there's gonna be a monthly ongoing fee of approximately $400 for the networking system. But the installation of these cameras, we feel is going to reduce the vandalism in the area, so that would be a saving. So we feel that would be, you know, partially going to offset that ongoing monthly fee of $400. All right? And then new vehicle access gates. We're gonna have gates fabricated, and these will be installed by our own street crew. We're trying to be as judicious as possibly with the funds we have to spend, so we've got, I've got some talented people in the Public Works Department, and we're gonna utilize them. So we're proposing two gates, and with the assistance of the police department, they'll be closed when the park closes at 10:00 PM. So this is going to prevent overnight parking in the, in the park. All right? And then, you know, good maintenance goes a long way, and we plan to crack fill and slurry seal the parking lot. This should be done every half dozen years. You take good care of your parking lots, they're gonna last a long time, rather than having to wait until you have to reconstruct them, and then the cost goes up exponentially. So what we're planning to do in the spring is do a crack fill and slurry seal on this parking lot.
May I ask a question while we're on this subject?
Sure, Councilmember Hensley.
Mr. Villafana, are we going to do a standard seal code or a type 2 road slurry?
A type, probably not a type 2 road slurry, because the turning movements there, you start getting scuffing and marking when you use a type 2 slurry. So we're probably gonna use, you know, a good crack fill and then a type 1 slurry. So we don't get those turning movements that you see when the cars mark. You know, a type 2 is great for a long straightaway. So that's what we're planning to do. Upgrade the existing lights to LED. We've done a trial run on this already, and the residents have been very pleased. We've replaced three of the existing lights in the parking lot with LED, and there's noticeable increase in, in the brightness. So, and I've been by there in the evening, and it does make a difference. So again, we're utilizing in-house, in-house staff. We're gonna purchase these, the lights, and install them ourselves with city staff. So again, stretching our dollar as far as possible. And as a recap, the pole mounted cameras, 40,000; the vehicle gates, 25,000; the crack fill and slurry seal, 50,000; replacing the existing lights to LED, 18,000. The total estimated cost is 133,000, and I'm asking for a $17,000 contingency for a total not to exceed 150,000. So, and we're gonna be doing this in accordance, of course, with the California Contracting Code. We've been doing the things like at Miranda Park previously. So that's what, that's what I'm asking you to consider tonight, these four amenities, and giving us authorization to expend those funds. Are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Villafana. Any questions from the group here? Councilmember Hensley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Villafana, congratulations. We're finally getting it done. Hopefully with a vote tonight. Some of the people in that area are really concerned about the homeless that's moving in there, and I understand that the monitors will be in the police department. Is that correct?
Yes, they're gonna be able to be monitored here at dispatch, and there'll also be a, an application where they could actually view it on their smartphone.
Oh, good. Now, other, other people are complaining that some of the bushes that are there is decorative, but it's becoming a hiding ground for them sleeping in there at nighttime. And we've had that big overflow from the beaches when they closed down the Holocaust site. Are we going to make other steps to kind of make this a safer, nicer park from all of that, or it's still something in process and ongoing?
It is ongoing. I've walked the site previously with several police officers to identify areas that should be trimmed back, and we'll do that again so that we can, you know, make sure there's not areas where somebody can hide behind.
Very good. Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it.
Any questions? Yeah, Mayor Protemberg?
Yes, thank you very much. This is long overdue, and I'm glad we're getting to this. And I would just like to move the motion forward.
Can I, can I ask a question?
I don't think so.
Sorry. That's what happens when you're last. Thank you, Mr. Villafana. So what's the estimated time of all these different projects starting and getting completed?
We're gonna phase them in. The first thing I'll be doing is we'll be purchasing those LED lights. So I'm hoping, you know, even with the holidays, hopefully by the first part of the year, to have the lights go in, we'll start working on, I've gotta come up with a quick design for the vehicle gates and then have that fabricated. So the first two ones to go in will be the LED lights and the vehicle gates. I expect to have those in sometime in January. There's the, the cameras. We've got two vendors we're looking at, and we're gonna get proposals from them again. And so realistically, the cameras and the poles will probably be later, probably towards March. And then the last will be, as I mentioned, in probably late March or early April, after, quote, "the rainy season", we'll be doing the crack filling and slurry sealing out there. So certainly by the spring, all these amenities will be in.
Okay, super. Yes, go ahead, Mayor Protemberg.
I thought I heard you say that we had at least one or some LED lights already up and running?
Yes, we put, I did, I asked to have our staff, we purchased three lights to check. They're in the parking lot.
They're in the parking lot now.
Right. And I wanted to see, you know, what the difference was gonna be in illumination. And it is significant, and some of the neighbors have, we've gotten positive feedback on it. So that was our test run, and that's what we did, and we're gonna complete it now.
So if I swing by there on my own tonight?
Tonight, you'll, if you go by there tonight, you drive in the park, you'll notice the three lights that are brighter.
Excellent, thank you.
So that's the way it's gonna look when we're finished.
And then on the gate itself, is that something that your crews gonna lock up and unlock every morning, or is that just, how's that gonna be taken care of once it's installed?
Well, we're gonna ask the assistance of the police department to close them at 10 o'clock, but in the morning, our crews typically open the restrooms and the tennis courts around between 7:00 and 7:20. So that's when those gates will be open.
Okay. All right, very good. Did you have another question? No?
Wondering if I can move to approve?
Yeah, so, yes, and hold on just a second. The city manager.
Sure, just one thing. I think the council's aware of this, but for the public, this would be entirely funded with leftover redevelopment bond proceeds money that goes back to the old days of the redevelopment agencies here. The money had to be spent either at Wymanee Beach Park or Miranda Park under the terms of that old redevelopment agreement. So we've been able to move forward on major improvements at Miranda Park, basketball courts, tennis courts, all of these improvements, the repainting and rehab of the bathrooms, all without really a dime of general fund money. That's a little bit misleading, because city staff, some of those employees are paid with general fund money, and they have been working on the projects. But all of the big ticket contract work has been accomplished without using any general fund money. So it's really been a nice, nice thing for us. And there'll still be some money left after this project, and Mr. Villafana will come forward later with recommendations on the, using the remainder of those funds.
We'll have, we'll have approximately $250,000 left after this, and I'm hoping to come back in, after the new year with a list of beach park amenities.
Which I hope then that surfers' showers on that list.
For the spring.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I put that in again. All right, so there was a motion made by Mayor Protemberg and a second by Hensley. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Villafana. Okay, so we move on to item 10, Community Development Director Reports and Comments. And so this is your quarterly report. Mr. Stewart?
That is correct. Thank you, ma'am, mayor, and members of the council, audience, staff. So this is the third quarter report from the Community Development Department. Thanks, Michelle. So starting off with planning and administration, we've been fairly busy in my little neck of the woods. We completed this, the SCAG, or Southern California Association of Governments, first call for information regarding the next round of the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Arena numbers. That's coming up for the next 2021 housing element term, as well as their, what they call the RDPSCS project, which is a regional transportation plan and strategy. We had till October 1st to get the information in, make sure it was correct. We did find actually quite a few errors. As you may recall, right now, we've lucked out with regard to affordable housing needs in the city. We only actually have to construct two in this segment. SCAG managed to find several hundred more units that are spaces for units. However, they were all inaccurate, so a lot of, a lot of cross marks on, on the map that was sent back to them. Waiting to hear back with regard to our submission. As you may recall in my last report to you, I mentioned that we had also got back to the census folks with regard to their first round of data collection, and we have not received any feedback. In this case, no news is good news, but we did get a nice little $7,500 check for the time that staff spent on this project. Communities asked for that, and we did, and we got the money back, so it went to the general fund. I continue to work on our zoning ordinance and municipal code updates. That'll be, for instance, property maintenance and cannabis ordinance updates. We've had two workshops, and I propose to bring this back beginning next year, when we have our new council members seated, to see if they want to do any further workshops, or if we just move forward with the actual discussions and public hearings on the amendments. Also, as Ms. Lee mentioned, we've got the new webpage. I'm one of the super users, along with one of my other staff members, and so we've been working not only to get as much information as we can upon our current webpage, but also to get everything ready when our new webpage goes live. At our last meeting, as you will recall, we also saw three additional PACE programs through the approval process. And just for the audience benefit, PACE programs are basically ways that folks can leverage the equity that they have in their homes for energy efficient projects, whether it be, say, solar projects, or, you know, bathroom upgrades, new energy, energy efficient projects, landscaping projects and whatnot. And it's funded through loans tied to their equity in their home and their taxes, as opposed to having to go out and get, say, a bank loan or something like that. And by providing these additional programs, this gives the potential property owner more, basically more availability of, and more choice through these programs. I attended the annual state planning conference in San Diego, and, well, as you know, we've already got some issues coming up with affordable housing programs. I learned a bunch of, a lot about a bunch of scary new programs coming up our way, too, so those be- So those will be wrapped into our next code updates as well. I also did learn quite a bit of other things. A couple of the interesting sessions I attended had to deal with, say, how the city of Ventura and the county has been dealing with things such as the Thomas fire. And obviously, that was very relevant based on what we've just experienced recently and what we will continue to experience here in the state. And then finally, I've been working on several recruitments. I have a staff of eight, but actually, right now, I have a staff of about four. We're recruiting for a technician up front because our former technician is now our new code compliance officer. Our building official decided that he needed to look into his retirement. He was able to get back in the parole system, but only if he went back to work for Simi Valley, so we lost him. And we are contracting out currently for building services. And then we have two part-time parking enforcement officers, vacant positions that we're also recruiting for. Quick update on our cannabis businesses. As everybody's probably aware, our fourth dispensary opened for business on October 8th. That's Safeport over at 353 West Channel Islands Boulevard. Picture of it right there. If you've not been into it, I urge you to at least step in because it's quite a facility. They've got kind of a high-end speakeasy design and it's very unique, but they spent quite a bit of money on this. So even if you're not interested in purchasing anything, it's quite a facility. We also issued permits recently for Emerald Perspective, which is over at the former Top Deck Bar at 100 Pleasant Valley Road. So hopefully demolition and construction will start soon on that particular business. And then finally, with regard to our other existing businesses, Freedom First, which was the first one to open here in the city, is also one of only 12 businesses statewide to actually have obtained their permanent annual license. Everybody's been working on, off of temporary licenses that keep getting renewed. The state is finally getting around to issuing annual licenses and Freedom First is one of the first to have those. Wheelhouse, which is over at 521 West Channel Islands next to the Hardy Mall Building, the one, the two-story building right on the corner of Channel Islands and Wheelhouse. They also have their building permits issued, so they are, I believe, already in the demolition mode and then will start construction soon. Just upstairs from them, Harvest Bloom, which is a delivery-only business, was approved by the city council. And so we're waiting to hear from them with regard to the post-approval process, building permits and whatnot.
So those two, excuse me, if you can go back, those two were at the same building?
Correct. And there's a third. As you will recall, the owner, Mr. Laalji, purchased that building and the Hardy Mall building with the intent to turn these into a healing center, pretty much a cannabis corner, if you will, with a variety of businesses such as dispensaries, cultivation operations, delivery-only services. So don't be surprised if you see a couple more come in from those particular buildings. Not necessarily dispensaries. I understand that there's basically one dispensary per building limit based on the leasing. But again, there may be secondary type uses such as delivery-only facility. PH Green Group, which is just on the other side of Hardy Mall, 475 West Channel Islands, and this is the building with Mandarin House and Avis. They have an application, they've had an application in for quite some time for dispensary on the first floor and then cultivation on the second floor. We're working through the process with them. Tradecraft, which is over at the, or will be over at the Boulder Gym, assuming that they get approved, is getting very close to being ready to come before you. That'll hopefully happen in January. Right now, we are just getting ready to get their CEQA documents off to the public noticing period, which is a minimum of 30 days. And that should commence this week or early next week for that 30-day period. And after that ends, then we can go ahead and schedule them for hearings.
Is CEQA the one that they go out and notify the community around them?
That's part of it. The CEQA is the environmental, so it's the California Environmental Quality Act. And with these, because we always want to err on the side of caution, because this has a cultivation component, it's not just a retail spot like a dispensary. They're actually proposing to use, you know, electricity, water, generate wastewater and whatnot. We wanted to make sure that they wouldn't be using excessive amounts or have any other potential impacts on the environment. So we have a consultant that we deal with, Rincon, who handles our larger environmental projects and documentation. So the consultant paid for Rincon services to prepare what's considered, what's called an initial study. And that resulted in finding that there wouldn't be any significant impacts. And so a negative declaration was prepared and that will then go out for public review starting either this week or next. And then finally, Port Industrial, which has already been approved, we are waiting, I'm sorry, Port Industrial, Port Retail was approved. Port Industrial is their manufacturing component. And this is the one where we are currently in negotiations with them over an industrial avenue site. And then finally, Laventine, which is also in that two-story building we discussed earlier, is a boutique cultivation. They only have one proprietary strain that they grow. And so they are asking to set up operations on the second floor, just down the hall from Harvest Bloom. So it would be basically three suites turned into a small cultivation operation.
And so Port Retail, which is the retail side of Port Industrial, where are they located?
They are at 437, so they are also along the Green Mile, as Chief Selinas calls it. Basically, just, I believe, near McDonald's area there and one of the suites there. And then we have two others that just came in recently. One we just talked about this evening, which is Red Mule Group. It's a micro-business, so it'll have several components to it. And if everything goes well with the city entering into a sale agreement at 700 East Port Wyndham Road, this application would go through the process. And then just down the street from them, the Surfside Self-Storage Facility was recently sold. And the new buyers are looking to turn this also into a cannabis-type campus. And the first of those applications would be from CA Labs, which is just that. They're actually a laboratory. The business owners are affiliated with UCLA and they do medical research. So much like Red Mule, in fact, they'd be affiliated to some extent. They are primarily looking at cannabis use for the medical field as opposed to recreational field and developing ways to, hopefully someday, actually use it to cure diseases. And so that's what this facility would be constructed to do.
Did you have a question?
No.
So moving on to building and safety, even though we're small, we are busy. We've issued well over 300, almost 400 permits in total for the last quarter. And these were worth a valuation of over $2 million. Some of the larger projects we did, we completed plan check on the Wheelhouse and Emerald Perspective dispensaries. We continued the plan check on CVS Pharmacy over at the Port City Plaza. Hopefully, the building permits will be issued within the next few days here. So we'll see some work actually starting out there at the old former Mary's Market. We also issued, well, we're in the process of looking at the plans for the Victoria Mixed Use, the piers, which need to be constructed first before the rest of the project can be constructed. But we did issue temporary permits for power poles and the construction trailer out there. We issued permits for a large-scale re-roof of Surfside 1. And we issued a certificate of approval for Menche's Frozen Yogurt. And if you haven't been in there, that's me being the master of ceremonies and the room cutting there. One of those duties, miscellaneous duties as assigned, but yes. But if you haven't been in there, it's really a neat little place. And, you know, it's right next door to the Habit. So a plug for them, you know, get your burger and then go over for your dessert. They also sell frozen cakes and whatnot. And then we also, as I mentioned, issued the certificate of approval for Safeport as well.
Now, on that Victoria Mixed Use, are you going to be coming back to us with some further updates as to what they're doing out there?
I sure hope so.
Kind of move slow.
Very slow. So we prod once in a while. We ask Mr. Ashkar where he is in the process and whatnot. And so as things come on, because obviously it's the largest project that the city has going, we will definitely be coming back to you with the updates as they occur. Not only at my quarterly reports, but when I get from Mr. Butler, my development updates will come to you there as well.
Because it includes, I don't know how many, four housing, right, up on like that site, third floor?
Yeah, so there'll be 20,000 square feet of retail on the first floor as well as four live-work units, which are a combination of basically, say, a studio and the actual residence combined. Then there will be 110 apartment buildings on four floors above that, so five stories total.
Yeah, okay.
So code compliance, we opened, our new code compliance officer is very active. She opened 593 cases in the last quarter, abated and closed 554, and there are about 39 active. This particular pair of pictures here, we received a call and went out that looked like somebody had formed over their driveway, getting ready, not their driveway, the entire front yard, looking like they were going to pave over it. It's actually a home for the aged and they were wanting to pave over the front yard so they could turn it into a parking lot for staff meetings, which is a no-no for many reasons. And so our code enforcement officer went out there, Public Works went out there and said, "Don't pour the concrete. It's not allowed." Well, they poured the concrete. So after much wrangling and getting to the point where we were going to start issuing fines, they finally did, in the lower picture there, remove the concrete back out. But expensive lesson learned to, you know, if your code enforcement officer comes out, because we are proactive, please listen to them. And because, you know, there's a reason, you know, we do have codes. We don't allow front yards to be paved over more than 50%. And this was a case where we needed to have that brought back into compliance at a significant cost to the property owner. Just a couple other shots of typical code enforcement complaints that we get, the weedy, unkempt properties, furniture out on the sidewalk there. But a couple other things that we have done besides just opening and closing cases is that we found that there was a business over on the Green Mile that was selling CBD cannabis products. And whether it's CBD only or if it's CBD and then the THC, which is the addictive part of cannabis, it's still considered cannabis by the state and we consider it cannabis as well. And therefore, somebody who wants to sell it, it's basically operating a dispensary and they have to go through the entire process. So we shut this business down temporarily until they got rid of the CBD. And we also sent letters to all of our liquor stores. This was a smoke shop, but all of our smoke shops and tattoo parlors, there were 17 in total here in the city, reminding them of the requirements so that we didn't have any more instances of illegal sales of cannabis here in the city. And then finally, we are actively pursuing the Surfside Motel property to get that back into compliance. I know it's at dormant for a while, but in the last couple presentations to you, I've let you know that we do continue on. It is right now with the city attorney's office, so I can't say a whole lot about it, but we are very active. We've been back and forth with them several times today, in fact, with regard to the next steps to make sure that we get that project into compliance at some point here. So as I can give you more information, I will on that one because I know it is a curiosity for not only the council, but the community in general.
So when you state this first bullet here, shut down one business selling CBD cannabis products. So I remember that one place that I think the police went in and busted this place on that Green Mile, right? But a long time ago, that was selling and had like all kinds of product in there. What happens in these cases? Is it the same thing or we just issue like a cease and desist? What?
Yeah, it's basically similar to a cease and desist where we do close them down. And then if we have to go into the business license revocation process, we will do that. We are looking to clean that up right now. It's a little convoluted and that will be coming back as part of the code updates. But that is something that we ultimately do. And this particular case, this was a second one, I think in the same building, but a second business shut down basically. And they at least complied very quickly. So we did get the voluntary compliance, got them cleaned up, so to speak, got them connected with a couple of our other dispensaries so that they can work with them and legally go through the channels. And so at this point, they're operating just as the smoke shop and what they call a glass shop where they sell high-end glass bongs and whatnot, so.
Okay. You have an interesting part of this city group, huh?
Tell me about it. It's a new experience every day, it seems. With regard to parking enforcement, they've also been busy. We issued over 3,400 parking citations and processed nearly 100 requests for vehicle tow's. Last quarter, I think I gave you an example of what I call an errant RV parked out and all set up and whatnot, ready to go. This time around, our parking enforcement officer shared this little banged-up vehicle with us, leaking fluids, parked way out into the pavement. So quite a few violations there that needed to be cited and then rectified. I'm not sure if she actually had that one towed or not, but it was definitely citation-worthy. And then, as I mentioned, we've lost two of our officers, but at least we do have one part-time in addition to our full-time parking enforcement officers. So we've got one and a half out there working right now. So what's upcoming? Once we get a building official back on board, we'll go ahead and continue working on our housing rehab programs, advertising and hopefully getting some new applicants into the process. We'll continue to work on our cannabis applications. There are six of them right now, as I mentioned earlier, that we're working through the process. Continue to work with CBS and Victoria Mixed Use. Like I said, CBS hopefully will be permitted and underway here shortly. We will, once it gets back on track, work on the comprehensive fee survey. And this is important because it will help us look at what fees need to be upgraded and where we may not be, where we may not have fees right now, where we could capture some fees for additional city revenues. We'll continue to work on the potential sale of the Pleasant Valley Road properties and the Little Blue House. In fact, hopefully, we'll have a report back to you soon on those two particular projects there. We will continue to work on the Surfside Motel property. Like I mentioned earlier, be bringing those, hopefully, the zoning and municipal code updates to you early next year. And then we'll continue to make those improvements to the new website and the webpages for the public's benefit. So with that, if you have any questions, otherwise that completes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Sharp?
Yeah, just one question in regard to the McCoy House, the Blue House. There's been some discussion as to when that was built. We went through an issue a few years ago. Without going into a lot of detail, somebody was going to, wanted to buy it and then modify it or move it or something. And there was an issue with the County Historical Commission on that. And apparently, it was not actually, it's not actually a county historical site, from what we know. And at the time, I thought somebody came up with the date of 1874. But then there's been other dates thrown out there as well, up to the 1890s. So I guess the question on that is, I was under the impression that that had historical significance and anybody that bought it was going to have to take that into account. But if it's not officially in the county register as a historical site, does that affect what a buyer could do with the property?
So from the way I understand it, first of all, it's kind of interesting that you bring up the dates because we just had this discussion in the last week. And we think it was around 1885, but you're right. I mean, our records only go back to when the city was incorporated, which was 1948. But this house is much older than that. And you're right, it was called the McCoy House. We call it the Little Blue House for obvious reasons. The understanding is that it's not an actual recognized historical site, any records. But our understanding is that if somebody does purchase that house, they can't just demolish it on the site. They do have to either rehab it, which would be very expensive, we understand, it's well over $1 million to rehab that thing and bring it up to current codes, or they need to... need to relocate it outside of the city. Once it's outside the city, there's honestly nothing that we have jurisdiction any longer. But those are the two options, so it cannot just be torn down in place.
Right, yeah, because I, there was, without getting into what the specific case was, I remember that that came up, and that definitely affected what was going to happen. And then, you know, when I heard from the conversation that's been going on the last couple of weeks, that, you know, it apparently wasn't in the county register after all, so, but it's still, because of its age, it would be triggered, that kind of scrutiny would be triggered if somebody didn't want to do something with it.
Correct.
Right, okay, thanks.
Any questions, Mayor Protem Burke?
I do. Going back to the PACE program, and you mentioned landscaping projects are also included within that program. As water becomes more precious and more expensive, we may have more homeowners wanting to convert their front yards over to drought-resistant plants, or maybe even, you know, asphalt it over, or cement it over. We would have to change rules. Exactly, I just saw that picture there. Can you talk a little bit, what can a homeowner receive through the PACE program to put in drought-resistant plants, et cetera? Obviously, it's against the law to pave it over, but there are options, and that's one of the, actually, it's one of the things I'm working on right now, it's all over my desk, is our new landscape ordinance, or at least an updated landscape ordinance. And the reason why is to address drought-tolerant landscaping and options to it. Not necessarily paving over, because that doesn't really help with the whole heat index, but at least mulch, you know, rocks, bark, in addition to zero-scape, you know, the drought-tolerant plants. And basically, what the PACE programs, from what I understand, allow homeowners to apply for is new plant materials, but also, say, replacing their sprinkler system with drip irrigation, new timers that also, you know, automatically go on and off and whatnot. So, anything to basically replace that turf area with, again, drought-tolerant landscaping, as well as irrigation systems that also limit the use of water.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for a very thorough report.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all the work and energy that your team does on a day-in, day-out basis, so thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay, so, next, we have Agenda Item Number 11, Chief of Police. And so, tonight, we have Commander Albertson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of City Council, members of staff. So, what I'm bringing before you tonight is a request and a recommendation to adopt a resolution authorizing the HR Director/Deputy City Manager to establish a new classification specification called Police Officer Trainee, and to establish a salary schedule for the position. So, I do want to emphasize, this resolution does not add additional police officer FTEs beyond what's currently funded in the budget. This is just creating a classification that does not exist in our current structure. And the plan going forward is for us to use this position to potentially fill current and future police officer positions. You do have a staff report in front of you, and so, at this time, we will be happy to take questions regarding either the position or the compensation.
Okay. Any questions for Commander?
After reading it, I believe it's a capital idea.
Any questions? Yes, Councilmember Sharkey.
All right, so this position fits in your current budget?
Yes. It'll be used to fill current or future funded vacancies, yes.
So, going forward, it'll also, it won't result in a budget adjustment?
It will not, no.
Okay, great, thanks.
Mayor Protem Burke, do you have any questions? Okay. So, do we have other cities in the area that exercise this kind of, or this level of staff?
Yes, this is actually very prevalent among law enforcement agencies throughout the state. We've been kind of behind the curve on getting this done, so this is pretty much the industry standard at this point.
So, typically, if somebody wants to come in and be part of our team, they have to have gone through the academy so far, and stepped in that way, and this kind of helps people get that first step in?
Yes, so currently, we only hire lateral transfers, which are people who are currently employed at a law enforcement agency or academy complete. Those are people who self-sponsored to go through a police academy. So, what this is, is we will hire people and then send them to the police academy, as Police Officer Trainees, and upon completion of a police academy, they'll be promoted to a probation, full-time police officer and enter a Phil training program.
Okay, very good. You have a question now?
I do now. What's the cost of a police academy?
You know, I don't have an exact amount, because it varies depending on the academy that you send somebody to. There are some that are more expensive, there are some that are put on by community colleges, so you also pay tuition fees and the fees for the college, so it will vary.
Within Ventura County, how many academies do we have?
Within Ventura County, we have one, that's Ventura County Sheriff's Academy. And then, the two closest to us currently are Allen Hancock College in Santa Marin and Rio Hondo, which is down in Whittier.
Do we know what the Ventura County Sheriff's Department charges?
I do not, no.
Okay, thank you.
And so, would this then allow the opportunity for, say, some of our explorers, or, you know, the younger group, if they really want to pursue this, that this would then be an opportunity for them as well?
Yes, so this actually will increase our pool of qualified candidates, but this also gives us the advantage of retaining potentially some of our explorers who have aged out of the program, or our Level 2 Reserve Officers, because we would be able to hire them and then put them through an academy, as opposed to them going on their own, and then, once they're done with the academy, they're free to be hired anywhere else. And so, this gives us, I think, a significant advantage over some of the other agencies in the county regarding our reserves and our explorers.
And so, the reserves that we have on our force, are they academy-trained?
They are, yes, but there are different classifications of Reserve Officers. So, Level 2 Reserve Officers have only gone through a Reserve Academy, and they have to work under supervision of a full-time police officer or a Level 1 Reserve Officer. Level 1 Reserve Officers have gone through a complete police academy, they just do it in segments, instead of going through all at once, and they are authorized to work alone, just like any other full-time police officer.
Okay, super. All right. So, is there a motion then?
I move to approve.
Okay, is there?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? None? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commander Albertson. Okay, with that, then, we are at Item Number 12, City Manager Reports and Comments. So, Mr. Butler?
Just a reminder that City Hall will be closed this Thursday, November 22nd, and then Friday, November 23rd, in honor of the Thanksgiving holiday. So, and that's the same two days that we've been closed many years, no change, I just wanted to make sure that people were cognizant of that. And then, thank you, Port Wainey voters. I didn't check this weekend, but the last, I think, maybe Thursday or Friday, Measure U had passed with a 68%, 68 and change approval margin by the voters of Port Wainey, and that's our local sales tax measure, that will generate anywhere from 1.8 to maybe a little over $2 million a year for our general fund. And that's a, that plus the cannabis revenue that is now beginning to flow in, plus CVS, the new CVS, property values have been growing, you know, there's just five or six factors that are really coming together to improve dramatically the general fund picture for the city, and we're really excited about it, but that Measure U component is a big part of it. So, we appreciate the fact that people take advantage of the education for it, on it, and that so many people, we didn't really need 2/3 approval, but we got a little over 2/3, about 68%. And even if you voted no, we still love you, as Port Wainey residents, we'll serve you just the same, but we're excited about it.
And so, with that, you're going to come back with some information, probably the first part of the year, with how we're going to treat that, and what we have to do in terms of establishing a committee and all, right?
Yeah, there will be a series of follow-up steps that the council will need to take, it'll be on the council agenda, and then, we're working closely with both the State Department of Tax and Fee Administration, which is the new fancy name for what was the Board of Equalization in the old days, so that's the state agency that will collect the new local tax and remit it back to us. HDL, our finance consulting company that's been tracking and reporting our sales tax for many years, they will also be helpful to us in that process. I have had some people ask, including a couple of our cannabis business operators, when does this actually take effect? It really does not take effect until April 1st, 2019, so it's still a few months off. That's not a decision that we get to make as a city, that's, again, the state agency that collects the taxes. So, takes effect April 1st, 2019. We won't see the first dime of it, really, until about July. There's about a 90-day lag between when the tax goes into effect and when the city actually begins to receive it. So, it's a little ways off, but there are important steps that we'll need to take between now and the end of the first quarter of 2019, to make sure that it gets implemented properly.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now, we are on Item Number 13, Councilmember Reports, Comments, and Requests for Future Agenda Items. So, we'll start over here with Councilmember Hensley.
For brevity, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Sharkey?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We had the pleasure, along with a thousand other people, to attend the Boys and Girls Club Annual Dinner and Auction, and it was another great, successful event, does a lot of good around the city, and also, I had the pleasure to attend the Mayor Protem's presentation at the Wainey Historical Museum on Saturday, and I have to say, it's one of the more entertaining ones we've had.
All right, thank you. Mayor Protem Burke, now? All right, so I just have a couple of things to report. I failed to tell you about the tree planting that the City of Camarillo had about a month ago, and I was joined by the city manager, by quite a few of his direct reports, and others that joined us on the backside of City Hall in Camarillo. You know, when we started celebrating our 70th anniversary, one of the things we did was we wanted to provide trees to different organizations. So, we started first with the school across the way that unfortunately had to close after the academic year, but, you know, we gave them some seedlings, and then, we went around and presented them to the different communities, as well as both counties, with regards to those that had been through the Thomas Fire and debris flow, and thought that would be a marvelous gesture, you know, as small as it was, to help them in their rebuilding. But one of the communities we wanted to make sure we were part of was City of Camarillo. We have quite a bit of friends over there. And so, this tree miraculously grows from a seedling to something that's about five or six feet tall. And so, they ended up then with Mayor Charlotte Craven and her team out there, they ended up doing a really nice tree planting, and celebrated with us with cake and punch and all that kind of stuff. So, it was really more of a city-to-city effect, but if you drive over to Camarillo City Hall, and you know the entrance on the backside of the building, it's prominently displayed there, and it's a beautiful, I think it could even be the red bud tree that they chose, really kind of beautiful tree. So, wanted to let you know all about that. And, of course, attended the Veterans Day Celebration. I was joined by, with a couple of my colleagues here, and many of the staff people here from the city, and celebrated right in front of the City Hall with our memorable Veterans Day Celebration. Larry Downing does a good job, and this year's celebration actually focused in on women, veterans. And so, he did a marvelous job of recruiting folks who are in our community, and they have served in the military, and they just had precious moments that they let us into, especially the nurse during World War II, just amazing what she was able to accomplish in that timeframe. So, those were several good things that we had, but I also then represented the city along with Chief Salinas and Commander Albertson for Sheriff Sergeant Ron Heales's memorial last Thursday. I don't know about you, but I know his family and his extended family, and so, it was quite a shock to find out that he was killed in the mass shooting in Thousand Oaks, and we grieved along with them, because it was a sad thing, but also, just knowing that there is a multitude of people who recognize and honor a gentleman like that, and the family, and all the others that were killed in this devastating situation in Thousand Oaks. So, just wanted to share with you that as well. And with that, then, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting for City Council on December 3rd. With that date in mind, it is going to be where we will be recognizing Councilmember Sharkey for his service. So, we're going to pause during that council meeting to take care of some of that business, and have invited quite a few dignitaries in other cities to come join us for that. We start that meeting at 6:00. It looks like we might have a closed session that evening, and with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.